Meeting of November 10th, 2022. Please join me in salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2022 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, township clerk, posted on township's website, and here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents have been made available on the Township Civic Clerk website for complete applications, and complete applications are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. That may have a roll call of board members and also board and township professionals, please.
Mr. Wagner, Mr. Hestag, Mr. Senator Mina, Mr. Scoboe, Mr. Jickerelli, and currently communiting Delcor, our absolute Mr. Pezen.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mary Lepont.
Here.
Vice Chair Julian.
Here.
Chair Sarachi.
Here.
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Strad.
Present.
Pass.
Here.
I'm here.
Excellent. Thank you. Just so you know, as of last night, I believe, Communiting Delcor is now Deputy Mayor.
Oh, congratulations.
It's been a little bit of change for the rest of the year.
I'm gonna forget.
No worries. Okay, we do not have any consideration of meeting minutes this evening. We do have a consideration of a resolution, which is Harvard Way, JMJ 4 LLC, with a file number of 21-PB-09-MSPV.
All members of the board are eligible.
Excellent. So may have a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Okay, any comments from today's hearing? None? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mary Lepont?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. We do not have planning board business, nor do we have any considerations of ordinances. So now I will go to business from the floor for matters that are not on this evening's agenda. If you'd like to address the board on any matter, except for this evening's agenda, you feel free to come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and there is a five-minute limit. Okay, so I think, oh.
David Brook, Seven Winding Way, Hillsborough. Good evening, everybody. A few months ago, I had asked if the planning board could return to paper, paper for the residents. When an applicant comes in, they provide drawings to the township, and sometimes they include renderings. Those are really helpful from our point of view when they used to be put up on the wall over there. And I would like to ask the planning board to please consider that, because when, in the past, when the applicants have gone on to the computer and presented the images up there, when you're in the back, you can't see them, and when they blow up areas, maybe a little bit. But it'd be very helpful if we could actually see the representations in paper, because they usually do nice color drawings, and it would be helpful, because it puts the entire application in perspective, and I think that would benefit the public. I believe they produce these things anyway, and it's just a matter of each of you in some format, or staff, simply asking them to put them, bring them in and put them up on the board so the public can see. It's my one request for the night.
All right. Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Good evening. Maria Janusak, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, Block 86, Lot 32 and 55, Camplain Road. I've been going over some of the records for the M&amp;M Realty Partners application for the Glengarry Project. There was a change of the zoning for that property specifically for M&amp;M Realty, and I was just wondering why the governing body of Hillsborough changed the zone, approved a special zoning ordinance specifically for that property.
I think it's been addressed in the past, Mr. Bernstein.
Actually, that's a township committee question, because they're the ones to determine the zoning, so.
Right. Well, I was just gonna say.
The more app group to answer would be the committee.
Right. But typically, it probably had something to do with the affordable housing.
I wouldn't disagree with that.
Excuse me?
Typically, anything like that would be involving the affordable housing settlements. That's something, I know that you've seen plenty of those come through, and it's nothing unusual. Every municipality, I think, winds up in that situation. But if you need more specifics, as Counselor said, the Township Committee is the governing body, is the one that actually changes zoning ordinances.
Okay, because from my understanding, the affordable housing is what gets those zone approvals, zone change approvals. And the Glengarry property doesn't have any affordable housing on it. It's 380 units of market rate homes that are going to be built on that property. So why, the question again, why was the zone changed? I hear what you're saying, that it's up to the governing body, and it was the governing body of Hillsborough Township that changed the zone of that property for them, specifically for that zone. But 380 market rate homes are going to be built on that property, no affordable housing on there. So it begs the question, why? Why was that zone changed for them? There's a lot of wetlands on that property. That property was contaminated. At the last meeting, there was a question about whether that property was remediated. There was a question about whether or not a licensed site remediation professional was going to testify in regards to that property, because you're talking about building 380 homes there, and we don't know, the only information given was a report. And being this is a quasi judicial body, anyone who provides a report should come and be able to explain that report and be available for questioning from the public. So that M&amp;M Realty is a very confusing application, because when they were here last time, they didn't come for the entire application. The application has been broken up, and right now, they're here for 100, they were before this board for 180 homes, when I think, in reality, it's 190 homes where it's supposed to be 380. So I don't know why they're doing, why the application is being done in drips and drabs, and why, as I said, that zone was changed. And also, there was an ordinance that changed the impervious surface for that property, increasing impervious surface, which only adds more to flooding. So those are questions that I think need to be answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so that we can have the record sort of, the reason why there's no affordable housing on that site is being built on another site in order to reduce the number of units that the applicant actually wanted to build on the site, which originally at one point was 1,500 units on the site. As for the zoning, you mentioned the comments, the court approved the zoning, there will be affordable housing built as part of the project, and the rest of it cannot be discussed, because it's an application currently pending before the board, and those are questions that Mrs. Janusak is more than happy to ask Mr. Wolfson and their witnesses back in December.
Thank you. Any other members of the public before we move on? Okay, so we're gonna move on to this evening's application. It's Western Road LLC with file number of 22-BB-03-MSPV with the time of decision of December 22nd of this year. It's Block 185, Lot 101, currently just known as Western Road. And the application, or the applicant, is seeking a preliminary and final major site plan approval, seat bulk variances and waivers to construct a 135,000 square foot warehouse building with stormwater, parking, and associated improvements on the property, which is located in the I-1 light industrial district. And I do believe that there was already an environmental commission hearing back on October 24th of this year. And with that, Mr. Grodnik, I will turn the mic over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike O'Grodnik. I'm an attorney at Savo Shaw, Corsini Warner Gillespie O'Grodnik &amp; Fisher in Somerville, New Jersey. I'm here on behalf of Weston Road LLC. As indicated, this is an application for preliminary and final major site plan for the construction of an industrial building, which would be 5,300 square feet of office and 140,155 square feet of the industrial warehouse portion of the building. Frontage is located on Weston Road. This is also described on the tax map as Block 185, Lot 1 in Hillsborough Township. Property is in the light industrial I-1 zone. The property is approximately 8.203 acres in size and is generally wooded. The applicant seeks to improve this property with one industrial warehouse building and an accessory office. Crucially, the proposed uses are permitted principal uses in the industrial zone. The application also seeks to move the access driveway easement benefiting the township to the rear portion of the lot, to a location that addresses the expansion of the wetlands area where the current easement area is currently, what was currently located. The site is located on the south side of Weston Road, across from the chained-off terminus of Waterman Lane. Site is undeveloped, characterizes upland forests with small patches of scrub and forested wetlands. The northernmost forested wetland is associated with a stream feature, which one runs northwesterly direction. The site is bordered on the north by Weston Road with residential development beyond, to the east by Conrail Delaware and Bound Brook Railroad right away, and some commercial development surrounding the property, with a small privately owned airport beyond the south, and a closed municipal landfill with unimproved forested area residential property to the west. The site is located within the Millstone River watershed of the Raritan River drainage basin. Additional proposed development includes all associated utility connections, access drives, parking, loading areas, walkways, trash, lighting, stormwater detention basin, water, sanitary sewer, gas, electric, and communications, which will untie into the existing lines located on Weston Road. The applicant's use is consistent with the warehouse industrial facility near this property, which includes 284 Sunny Mead Road, General Tool, which is an industrial warehouse building, 113 Weston Road, Mindstone Construction, 101 Weston Road, industrial warehouse building, and generally on Kennedy Boulevard, north of Weston Road, which has numerous commercial parcels adjacent to the rail line. I think it's important for the board to understand the history of this property and the public. This property was approved for 13 industrial warehouse lots in 1990, October 4th of 1990. This property has been zoned industrial for decades. The subject property was originally owned by Hillsborough Township until it was sold at a public auction in 1969. Since March of 1970, the property has been owned by the current owner, Guastella. On October 4th, 1990, Hillsborough Township Planning Board granted preliminary and major subdivision of the property, which approval was memorialized in a resolution dated October 29th, 1990. Pursuant to the terms of the approval, the owner was granted a 13 industrial lot subdivision. And said approvals have been extended by the planning board as recently as the 2000s, confirming that the period of approval has been told. In order to satisfy certain resolution compliance requirements pursuant to the approval of the industrial warehouse, there was extensive soil testing done on the property. That was on or about the late 1990s, 1998, including testing conducted in the southwest area of the property. The testing, together with a detailed review of the township records, revealed that the presence, that there was a presence of a landfill that was previously owned and operated by Hillsborough on the property since the early 1960s, which was not disclosed as a part of the auction process. The owner then filed a notice of tort claim and filed a lawsuit against Hillsborough Township alleging actions, causes of actions including fraud, fraudulent concealment, negligent landfill operations, nuisance, et cetera, relating to the failure of the failure of Hillsborough to disclose that the property was used as a municipal landfill and was of Hillsborough to disclose that the property was used as a municipal landfill and was contaminated before it was sold. In addition, the complaint alleged that Hillsborough violated laws as it was related to landfill operations and closures, including the Sanitary Landfill Closure and Contingency Fund Act, the New Jersey Spill Compensation and Control Act, and the Federal Comprehensive Environmental Response Compensation and Liability Act of 1980. That case was ultimately settled by way of the industrial warehouse project and the township taking ownership, I would say retaking ownership of the contaminated landfill that it failed to disclose when it was sold. The industrial project approvals were then extended various times in the last 20 years and there hasn't been any zone change from the industrial zoning. The 55 older community across the street was developed in the 2000s. The township approved and codified the industrial use in the master plan well before the residential use across the street. And I understand that that was initially an application that was denied, that went to litigation and was settled as part of the fair share for the construction of the residential across from the industrial zone. The applicant in this matter does have an end user who will testify and will will briefly touch on on that, although we don't, we may not get to him tonight. The use is a textile company. It's a web based company that sells towels and sheets. The name of the company is Miracle Brand. If anybody wants to Google that, you can see their products and services. So this is not a speculative warehouse, has been has been criticized in other applications. This is an application for a textile company that sells towels and sheets. The current proposal has a has a one unified warehouse as opposed to all the different, say, condo flex warehouse, which was originally contemplated in in the settlement as well as in the prior applications that have been extended. This application also only has one bulk variance, and that is for height. So this application is compliant for greatly exceeding minimum lot area, one acres proposed, one acres required, 18.2 acres are proposed. Minimum lot depth, 200 feet is required. We're at almost 800 feet. Front yard, side yard, rear yard, all compliant. And notably, the front yard is a 50-foot buffer. We're at 173 feet. For the minimum lot width that's set back, it's a 200-foot requirement in the I-1 zone and we're at 883 feet. Impervious coverage is 60% is required and we're at 49.4 feet. Buffer area is compliant. And then there's the max building height where 35 feet is required and 38.4 feet is proposed, which is our sole variance. In addition, several waivers have been identified by Mr. Coys in his review memorandum dated today, which includes a buffer from the property line to the loading or parking with 10 or more parking spaces. This is adjacent to the existing commercial building. Mr. Ford will point out where 30 feet is required and 16 feet is proposed. We have our typical parking space variance, 10 by 20s required. We're asking for 10 by 18. There's been a variance identified for tractor trailer parking spaces, 10 by 60. Isle width, 24 foot is proposed where 30 foot is required, again, a fairly typical variance. And then there's a signage waiver for the wall signs and there's a wall sign that exceeds 40 square feet. And with respect to tree mitigation, there's the economic hardship waiver that the planning requirement is reduced to 1.5% of the total site improvement for the development. With me tonight, I have Michael Ford from Van Cleef Engineering Associates. He will be my first witness to go over the site plan. And if time permits, we'll then move to Mr. Gary Dean from Dolan &amp; Dean, who's our traffic engineer. And unless there's any questions, be happy to answer them at this time. Any legal questions?
Mr. O'Grodnik, just for my clarification, so no one from Eco Sciences is here?
Sorry about that. We normally tell you to do that, so apologize. There's nobody from Eco Sciences, so Mr. Ford will be responding to the environmental questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to go over some ground rules too because I meant to do it beforehand. So we do have the multipurpose room set up for overflow. So I know there's some folks standing, seats over there, and do we have a feed going in there from a TV perspective or is it just audio? Okay. Sure. Might as well, just so that way folks can meander out there, so.
Everyone need to take a recess.
What? I'm just going to go fill all the other. And if he's not back in time then. For most of you that haven't perhaps been to a plane board hearing, we will end at 10:30 sharp. We do not take additional testimony by any new witnesses after 10:00 PM. Once a witness has provided their testimony, the public will have the opportunity to ask that witness anything with regards to their testimony. So he can't answer, he won't be answering traffic questions. That'll be the next person up. But as has already been spoke or has been mentioned, besides the usual engineering or civil engineering portions of it with regard to stormwater management and design, he will also be answering environmental related questions. I'm just trying to think. You want to just take a couple of minutes before he gets? All right. We're just going to take five minutes just to let Mr. Coys get back, but just to let you know that we do have the room across. Oh, he's back fast. Good, you got it set up. So there is a TV feed over there. So you can't get the video and, you know, feel free to come, you know, back and forth. Okay, what's that? Yeah, we need these.
What do you do with your mouse, too? There we go. Oh, yeah.
And I guess we will swear in Mr. Ford?
You swear your testimony to give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes. Yes, Michael Ford, F O R D, professional engineer with Van Cleef Engineering, appeared before this board numerous times.
Okay, and I'll just ask the normal question. Anything changing the status of any of your credentials, certifications since the last time you appeared before here?
No.
There's no objections?
Mr. Ford, for the purposes of record, could indicate your educational experience as well as your licenses. I realize you've appeared before this board before, but we have a generally new group of Mr. O'Grodnik's fans here tonight, so.
Certainly, I have a bachelor's in civil engineering from Rutgers University, 1985. I've been licensed as an engineer and planner since 1990. And can everybody hear me? No? And I've been practicing engineering since that time in the area of land development here before this board numerous times, as well as other boards throughout the state of New Jersey.
The license is current?
Yes.
I asked that first. So that's always my first question. But also because we do because of the, I'm going to say perhaps people that residents have been here for the first time, we will try not to speak in acronyms as best as we can or we'll define our acronym as we move along because I'll anticipate there'll be questions on, you know, on those acronyms going forward.
PDQ. All right. The exhibit I have on the screen is entitled Proposed Condition Exhibit. It's a colorized version of the site plan last revised July 29, 2022. And we'll mark that as A1.
Yes, please.
Okay. As was described as part of the introduction by Mr. O'Grodnik, the property is in the light industrial zone. It's 18.2 acres in size and I'm highlighting now the boundary of the property, which is with a thick yellow line. It has frontage on Weston Road. That's the north side of the property or the bottom of the page. The south side of the property or the top of the page is a rail line and just beyond that you'll see the runway, the end of the runway for the airport south of the site. The portion of the land that was originally part of the tract that was sold by the township, as Mr. O'Grodnik described earlier, I'm highlighting now and that's this out parcel to the rear or south of the site identified as a separate lot. And other neighboring uses, the steel fabricating facility to our east, to our north, across the street from the site is the residential 55 and older community that Mr. O'Grodnik described, and then residential uses to our west. There is also another out parcel within the light industrial zone that's not part of the application and I'm highlighting that now. It's the front right hand corner of the property just off site. As part of the development of the plans for the application, there were specific studies done and approvals to verify the limits of those regulated areas, including wetlands. Freshwater wetlands and wetland buffers were mapped on the site and in January of 2022, a freshwater wetland letter of interpretation was issued for the site. There's a portion in the northeast corner of the property or the left side of the page that is encumbered by wetlands as well as a portion of the property in the rear right hand corner of the property or the southwest. And there's also some narrow bands of wetlands that developed along what looked like historic dirt access drives to the property. And as I stated, that process to verify those freshwater wetlands is a site specific study, which was done by Eco Sciences, a wetland delineation map prepared and submitted to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, would refer to them as NJDEP normally. That process was carried out to its conclusion in January of this year, which included a site visit, actually numerous site visits by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection staff member to review and verify those wetland limits. In addition, in June, June 11, 2020, there was a permit issued by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for a disturbance of a riparian zone. And as part of that approval for that disturbance of that riparian zone, they also issued what is known as a flood hazard area verification. That is to verify the extent of any flood hazard areas on the site and also what is known by DEP as riparian zones or what some also view similar to what is described as a stream corridor. So the freshwater or the flood hazard area permit was issued for a road or part of a road that was proposed as part of that prior project for the multiple individual lots within the industrial zone project. And that access road crossed the portion of riparian zone, which I'm highlighting now in the northeastern corner of the site. And as part of that permit approval, the verification of the riparian zone, that is the buffer along this drainage feature, which is identified as a state open water on the wetland approved plan, was established as a 50-foot riparian zone. We are not proposing any disturbance of that riparian zone as part of this application and wouldn't utilize the approval as was issued by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for that previously proposed access driveway. And as you or the board members are familiar, the township has a stream corridor ordinance that requires actually 150-foot buffer, three times what the state required buffer along this drainage feature. And the plans identify that area associated with this drainage feature in this, what I'm referring to is the left corner of the plan. I'm highlighting it with the cursor or the northeast corner of the site fronting Weston Road. And as part of the application, we are proposing a slight intrusion within that stream corridor, which is balanced by an averaging plan where the buffer or the stream corridor is made larger on site. The property is within the public sewer service area of the site of the township. There is existing public sewer in Weston Road as well as public water. So the project would be serviced by public water and sewer. As part of the application process, there would be eventually a connection permit submitted to the Hillsborough Township Municipal Utilities Authority. That process hasn't commenced. However, we have submitted what are known as will serve letters to various utilities, including the Hillsborough Township Municipal Utilities Authority and as well as the New Jersey American Water, which is previously known as Elizabeth Town Water Company, which is the franchise owner of the public water in Weston Road. With regards to the proposed site improvements, as was already described, there is the one bulk variance for the building height.
May I stop you there? As Mr. O'Grodnik has indicated in his introduction, the proposed building height is 38.4 feet, correct?
What I was about to say is that that's a relief associated with the building, which will be addressed by our architect and planner. So it's not a site engineering issue.
So at what point, Michael, are we going to address the fact that you currently are seeking what is known as a D variance, which is a use variance, which this board doesn't have jurisdiction over?
Okay. So there's been some commentary between the board professionals and the applicant with respect to the definition of building height. My understanding is that historically, for as long as I've been practicing before this board, building height has had an interpretation. And I'll read for the record what the definition as codified in section 188, three states. Building height, quote, "The vertical distance from the grade to the top of the highest gable, slope of a hip roof or otherwise the highest point of the roof." When a building- When a building faces more than one street, the height shall be measured from the average of the grades at the center of each street front." As I indicated, we've always understood the building height to be, to mean from the average grade pertaining to the front wall of the building facing the roadway to the highest point of the roof. We have an email from Planning and Zoning dated January 4, 2021, that states, "Good morning. The building height should be taken from the average grade pertaining to the front wall of the building in Perrin facing the roadway to the highest point on the roof. Please let me know if you have any further questions. Best," and it's from Patrick Gordon, who is the Assistant zoning official. Subsequent to the application, I understand Mr. Coys has, transitioning into his role as the Planning Director, and, correct me if I'm wrong, for the first time, the board has now changed the interpretation of how building height is calculated.
Let me, let me change the characterization. The Planning Department has produced an opinion which is contrary to the opinion you believe they're responsible for. The board has taken no action one way or the other. And Mr. Coys wishes to comment accordingly.
Currently, as the interim Planning Director and someone that's currently assigned to doing the review, the staff review for this application, I was not the person that had taken in the application in terms of doing the completeness review. So as I've been reviewing the application, in addition to being the interim Planning Director, I'm also the Deputy Zoning Officer. I began working for the township in 2011 as the Assistant Planner and Zoning Official for the township. I was a zoning officer for about five years, and I've been working for the town for more than 11 years and have held the capacity of either the Acting Zoning Official or Deputy Zoning Official for that time. My practice in terms of administering the ordinance on a day-to-day basis with residents and commercial uses, it's been my understanding, the way that we, and when I say "we," meaning since I've begun working for the town, our department has administered it, basically looking at the grade and going to the highest point and looking at all sides of the building. I cannot speak to the last seven years or so when I had transitioned over to the Economic and Business Development Department, but what I can do now is simply do the staff review report, look at the definition, consult with the zoning official for the township. In terms of Patrick Gorman, having been the zoning official, in my understanding, he provided some correspondence to you before the application was formally submitted. I am giving my opinion in terms of the staff review report that currently, based on the architectural plans that were provided, it appears that the building is larger than 38.4 feet on the loading dock side of the building, and therefore, it's greater than a C-bulk variance, it's actually a D variance. I've asked the applicant to provide architected and perhaps grading plans and provide any additional information for us to address it. I have not received anything, and I am standing by that it is still larger than 38.4 feet.
Is this the, is this the first application that differs from the historic interpretation of building height?
So you're making reference to what you're calling historic. I cannot, I have not been in the capacity of doing the staff review reports for the last seven or so years. I can only, I can only offer what I've been involved in. I cannot answer as to what the staff has been currently interpreting the ordinance. I don't know if you have anything, you know, from, you know, a formal zoning officer determination with the current staff.
Well, we, we received the review memorandum from Planning today. I believe we received an email from Planning and Zoning several weeks ago. So essentially, the rules have changed within two weeks of our hearing. This was submitted in January. This was deemed complete in September. We just received a new interpretation of building height, and the applicant will revise the plans to meet the interpretation, albeit, we think erroneously, at least based upon the long history of how building height was measured in this municipality. We reserve our rights with respect to that, but we will be revising, we have to redesign the whole building now, based upon this new interpretation. So no, we didn't have it completed for today, but my understanding is that the next hearing is not many months, is not for many months, and we will certainly submit revised architectural elevations showing all four elevations, respecting the 38.4-foot maximum height. That's a C-bulk variance that doesn't get us into the territory of a D6 height variance. So we will comply, but again, given the recent changes of the rules or the interpretation of the building height, the applicant will need time to that, now redesign the project. With respect to...
The question then becomes, Mr. O'Grodnick, whether or not it makes sense to pursue the existing application in its current configuration, if the building may in fact change to a point that it changes the potential application as a whole.
No, there won't be any substantive changes to the application, and again, we were just informed.
All right. So I just kind of, just want to, David, what do you calculate the height of this building to be?
To be larger than 38.4, it should also be put on the record that the architect did not put any, any graphic scale on it and use the scale that is, a scale that's not something that's normally available to us to use the instruments that we currently have. And so also what's represented on the plan is it, it has language where it says where the grade is, but the actual height doesn't start at the grade. So when you look, when you look at the elevations, and it's very far to the left, and it doesn't line up exactly. So you really have to go into the plan and really start to lay things out and see that there's area of the building that's not actually being included. So I didn't find that the plans were very apparent or very clear, and so I don't know if it was something that was possibly misunderstood when it was initially reviewed, but I would be asking for the plans from the architect to be much clearer and have that be explained and also provide a graphic scale so that we could verify ourselves. And I would ask the, you know, the board engineer to assist with that, with that work as well.
Mr. Chairman, I had a chance to review this, Mr. Coys, in terms of looking at the plan. I think really, you know, what I typically see on architectural plans is I see where the elevation is supposed to be measured based on our definition. It's called out, and what typically, typically it's called out essentially from where that elevation is, what it's shown, it's usually shown on the site plan, and it's, it's shown in reference to the architectural plan. I think it's very simple interpretation, but I'm with Mr. Coys. I tried to look at it as well, and we also opined earlier in our review letter, you know, on behalf of the board, that we had, we do have a misunderstanding about the interpretation because we can't find anything graphical on it to represent it in the architecturals. Mr. Coys is right, they're using a scale that's very difficult to ascertain, it's a very small scale, but if it would be called out a little bit more clearly, I think we could move on and determine whether or not it's, needs to be for the board, for the zoning board.
So basically, we don't have a defined height right now, so I, so you should be able to make the 38.4?
Yeah, we're going to be able to make the 38.4, but again, that shouldn't delay the site plan, the traffic.
No, I don't think it should. I think what we just, you know, I think everyone wanted to make sure this wasn't a 45-foot building, and then you're going to squat it out or have to bury it into the ground to make it 38.4 and create some havoc for some of the, some of the engineering that was done on it, so.
Yeah, the, the current plan is to resubmit architectural renderings. I think we're going to, I mean, the earliest we're looking as March of 2023. Although, you know, I have to put, you know, make a record that, you know, I think that there's some issues with changing the historic interpretation based upon principles of equitable estoppel, based upon principles of the time of application, and I'm sure Mr. Bernstein disagrees, but...
Thank you for acknowledging that.
Yeah. And also, you know, issues of waiver, issues of due process, issues of selective enforcement, issues of interpretation.
I gotta stop you there, there's no selective enforcement, so come on.
Well, the rule, the rule, interpretation just changed.
Mr. Chairman, for purpose of the record, let Mr. O'Grodnick put his record on. By no means, in any way, shape, or form, is the record he's placing necessarily agreed to by Board Counsel or by the board.
So, you know, a lot of cases have talked about the interpretation of ordinances, and what we're facing was, is if we disagree with the new interpretation as of two weeks ago, then we would be compelled to seek an interpretation before the Board of Adjustment. This board would lose jurisdiction. This board has no power to interpret ordinances or, you know, constitutionality. This board has to examine the plain language. Is the, is the language crystal clear? Perhaps not, but, you know, when you look at the second portion of the paragraph, it does seem to qualify and what, what the historic interpretation of building height is. But again, for purposes of tonight, we intend to get through the site plan and traffic, and when we come back, we'll certainly, greater than 10 days, hopefully well beyond 10 days, have, have all the four elevations with measurements. Yes, there's an issue currently with the design with the loading area. It's a four-foot loading area. Historically, since that area was not facing the street, that would have been permitted to exceed the, the prior interpretation of the height variance or the, of the building height, but we will supplement the record with whatever's requested with respect to the building height. The intention at this stage is to, is to keep under the 38.4 feet, which is the jurisdiction of the planning board, and to avoid a D6 height variance before the Board of Adjustment.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon?
With regards to the building orientation, as I presented at the Environmental Commission, the building's been oriented in perpendicular to the road fashion, so the narrowest point of the building faces Weston Road, the wider portion faces the east and west. The loading is on the east side of the building. There are 20 loading spots proposed immediately adjacent to the building with two places where ramp drive-in access would be permitted at that portion of the building. In the same area as the loading adjacent to the building, there are 28 trailer parking spaces there at the most southern portion of the site, along the rail line and behind our industrial use neighbor to the east. All the loading traffic would be via the easterly driveway, and then along the westerly side of the property, where the main building entrance would be on the west side of the building, are 139 parking spaces proposed. Within that parking space area, there is that design waiver that was referenced for nine-by-18 parking spaces with a 24-foot access aisle with a reference to the township standard of 10 by 20 spaces and a 30-foot access aisle. With regards to circulation, we did receive one of the review memorandums, and we'll go through all of them in detail at some point, I'm sure this evening, a request from the Township Fire Official to include access around all four sides of the building. As I've already described, the, the loading is on the east side, the parking is on the west side, there's a connection driveway between those two access points, and the only portion of the site that doesn't have a driveway on it is the southwestern corner, and we would provide for emergency access, a green, if you will, access lane at that With regards to site lighting, we're proposing site lighting in accordance with the township standard, that is not exceeding the 15-foot maximum height of the mounting height of the lights, and to the extent there's any deviation from the standard, it would be to provide lower lighting, not higher lighting. And part of our orientation of both the building and the parking is, includes preservation of a large green area associated with that state open water in the northeast corner of the property I'm highlighting now, to provide for screening and a buffer between Weston Road and that loading area, and that's a natural buffer that would be maintained. And then beyond the improved areas, those other existing wooded or vegetated areas would be left undisturbed. As we've said already, the total site area is 18.2 acres, of which approximately 11.2 is disturbed, leaving seven acres undisturbed. One of the elements that we described as part of our initial outline of the application was that there is an existing easement traversing the site, which I'm highlighting now, which is where that previously proposed industrial subdivision road was to be located. At the end of that road is a large area of wetlands that was encountered and identified and verified by NJDEP, which would have precluded continuing that road and that cul-de-sac at that location. So as part of the application, we're proposing that that access easement to the township property, that the, the historic landfill would be via the westerly driveway. And what I'm highlighting now is the extension of that driveway toward the township property, and that would include one of the two small wetland crossings where the wetlands are now or, and would permit such a crossing in accordance with the DEP or New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Regulations Regarding Wetland Disturbances, and the other small crossing is where I'm highlighting now in the front westerly corner of the site. I've already described some outside agency approvals. I'd like to highlight now two others that we've received. That is the Somerset Union Soil Conservation District that has jurisdiction over soil erosion and sediment control measures throughout the construction of the project, and that was issued by the Somerset Union Soil Conservation District on September 16, 2022. We also are in receipt of a letter dated August 26, 2022, from the Somerset County Planning Board. That's another outside agency regulatory authority. Any land development application is required to submit to for their review and comment and approval. That August 26, 2022 letter from Somerset County indicated that the Somerset County Planning Board approves the project. Okay. With regards to layout and the other waiver, there is a small portion of the loading area, and you can see where there's a pinch point now that I'm highlighting in the rear portion of the loading area, where the adjacent property corner extends in toward the subject site, and that's the location where for a small portion of that loading area, it's within 30 feet of the property line. That is specifically 16 feet from the property line, and that's one of our waivers that's being requested. line, and that's one of our waivers that's being requested. Trees and tree mitigation and landscaping, this plan highlights the proposed landscaping, that is buffering along our front boundary, as Mr. O'Grohan indicated, while the front yard setback required is 50 feet, that is the building, under the current, under the zoning, could be 50 feet from the right-of-way of Weston Road, in this case, the proposed building is, is located more than three times that 100, that 50-foot minimum requirement, or at 159.6 feet, and also the rear yard setback is substantially exceeded, which is also 50 feet, whereas that setback is in excesses, in excess of 170 feet. So I started describing the landscaping along the front, there's a stormwater management feature, which is a pond constructed wetland feature, that is, it would have a permanent pool of water in it, which would provide for a more aesthetic, a pleasing view, I'll say, with a wet basin, and associated with that wet basin are, because it's a pond constructed wetland feature, it actually includes wetland-type features where there's a shallow marsh and a, and a low marsh area where various plantings are provided, and this is in accordance with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, BMPs, or Best Management Practices that regulate the various types of stormwater management features that can be implemented at a site, so we provided for that pond constructed wetland in the front with the associated landscaping around it, and then throughout the property, other areas of proposed plantings and foundation plantings, and again, it's a industrial use, so internal to the site, the landscaping is not, is, I'll say customary to that type of use, we are seeking and implementing the township's code for tree mitigation economic hardship waiver, where the tree mitigation obligation has a ceiling at a 1.5% total cost of the project construction, that includes the building as well, where that economic hardship waiver ceiling dictates a requirement of 692 trees at pleasant, present, as I described at the Environmental Commission meeting, we have 32 onsite trees, which leaves 660 trees, which would, in accordance with that code outline, be in the form of a contribution to the town for the plant, those plantings. In addition to the plantings that I've described, there's 532 shrubs in an excess of 6,000 plantings that, you know, obviously at this scale can't be outlined within and associated with that pond constructed wetland. With regards to stormwater management, the site drains from, generally from rear to front, or from south to north toward Weston Road, there's a, an existing stormwater collection pipe that drains this state open water in the northeast corner of the site, and there's also a stormwater pipe crossing Weston Road that gathers stormwater from the site, which is a 24-by-38-inch elliptical pipe, the detention basin, that is that pond constructed wetland connects to that existing pipe, and in addition to the onsite collection system that takes stormwater from the pavement areas, and they're also referred to as, I'll say, surfaces that require water quality treatment, that is the parking loading areas and driveways, as opposed to the impervious cover associated with the building, there's a stormwater collection system that, with catch basins typically would be familiar with the public along the curb lines that are connected via pipes and direct the stormwater to this collection, this constructed wetland pond at the front of the site, that impoundment, that is the storage volume associated with this basin, is intended to gather that stormwater, which would be greater from an impervious cover situation such as a pavement or building, as opposed to lawn or green space like woods, take that greater runoff, temporarily store it within this impoundment and release it at a controlled rate via that connection to the existing pipe at the frontage of the site. The state regulations require that as part of that impoundment or that basin, that there's an obligation to reduce the runoff, that is the peak flow of existing conditions by a certain percentage for the two 10 and 100-year storms, in this case, the allowable release rate from the site based on existing condition modeling, and this is hydrograph, hydraulic modeling of the existing conditions in accordance with the stormwater management regulations, specifically identified as NJAC sem, seven, semicolon eight, so for the two-year storm, the allowable release rate is 3.96, I'm sorry, 4.33 cubic feet per second, and the proposed project reduces it below that minimum standard to 3.96 cubic feet per second, for the 10-year storm, the allowable release rate is 15.13 CFS, and the basin peak flow for that 10-year storm releases, releases runoff at 5.72 CFS, so virtually a third of what the maximum allowable would be for the 10-year storm, so substantially below what the threshold the regulations require, so not just making it, and then for the 100-year storm, the allowable release rate from the site is 37.05 CFS or cubic feet per second, while the analysis demonstrates that the basin control for quantity, and this is quantity of flow, releases at 26.79 cubic feet per second, so literally 10 cubic feet per second less than what the maximum threshold is. In addition to water quantity, that is the rates of discharge from the site, there's also a requirement for water quality, water quality is treating the runoff from those paved and parking and driveway surfaces, while until recent regulation changes, this pond constructed wetland would serve as a water quality measure, in fact, it does provide for such water quality measures, but recent changes to the regulations require that those treatments be provided closer to the source of that runoff, so one of the approaches to address that requirement is to provide what they call mechanical treatment devices, so in addition to the catch basins along the curb lines within the site, paved areas in advance of that would be a, a similar type of structure, but would gather low flows that first rinse of those paved areas and flush it through a treatment mechanism, that being a soil matter with plantings in it, so you may have seen this in more urban areas where they're implementing these water quality measures, it's that, what we call a mechanical treatment device, but it's not a mechanical moving part, it's a structure, just like a catch basin, but with enhanced features that include that soil filtration matter to, to filter out impurities within the stormwater runoff, and that vegetated cover that's part of that treatment process, and that's what we're implementing on this project to provide for that water quality treatment at, and close to the surface or source, and finally, there is a third requirement as part of any stormwater management system, which is groundwater recharge, groundwater recharge, you've heard on other applications where soil mapping units are being requested to be changed, certainly the soils in Hillsborough Township and Somerset County are not like the soils you find in the coastal regions where they're sandier, more permeable, this site has what is known as type C soils, we haven't endeavored to test and try to switch or demonstrate that there are some other classification, we've done onsite testing to identify the.
Since Mr. Julian has left the dais, we now do not have a quorum at the moment, so I would ask you to wait until he returns, maybe, Mr. Chairman, time for recess.
Yeah, time is quarter off.
Quarter off.
You want five or 10, like?
Ten.
Ten? All right, so where we convene at, five o'clock? Okay, everyone, we're going to come back into session. And I'd like to point out to my left, your right, what I will call the David Brooks display. We have a rendering. So it's the same thing that you see up on the screen is off in... It's off to your right. You ready, Mr. Ford, to continue?
Yes.
All right. Oh, so I just wanted to remind everyone up here on the dais that if one of us does step down, we have to pause because then we lose the quorum.
Sorry about that.
No worries. No, look, I'm not going to stop you.
There's no issues.
Yes, sorry. The alternative would be far worse if I stopped. All right, Mr. Ford?
Okay.
Thanks.
Good. All right. As we paused, I was going to... I was about to describe...
Not you.
Not you. I was about to describe the groundwater recharge element of stormwater management, one of the third elements. For this project, we are using small-scale underground infiltration basins. There is two proposed on this site, one in the loading area and one on the east side of the building and one under the parking on the west side of the building. This is above and beyond the basin at the front of the site. These underground basins are stone basins that capture runoff from the roof. So the roof is split in half where half of the runoff is directed to one underground small-scale infiltration basin and half is directed to the other. So we comply with the area, drainage area limitations of the NJDEP, New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, best management practices, limits for those types of facilities. It is qualified as green infrastructure, that is GI, those types of facilities. And what it does is it captures runoff from the roof into this stone bed and forces it or encourages it to infiltrate into the ground. So it reduces the volume by recharging the stormwater into the ground, immolating what the natural land cover may do at the site. And this is a requirement by NJDEP. There's a groundwater recharge spreadsheet in Appendix K of the report, which identifies the requirement recharge volume for this stormwater management element. And it uses in the spreadsheet calculation, which is a spreadsheet that's been published by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. And for this project, the annual recharge deficit that would have occurred because of the change in land cover from predominantly woods to impervious cover would be 384,818 cubic feet. That is being compensated for by this element that provides for that recharge. And if you... That annual deficit is made up by this mechanism, and that equates to virtually 3 million gallons. So there's been... And there was some discussion at the Environmental Commission about volume of stormwater runoff concerns. This is an element that promotes and actually forces the groundwater recharge by capturing the runoff from the roof, going piping it directly into these underground facilities. And there's no outlet structure that's above where or below where the bottom of these stone underground basins are. So the groundwater or the runoff is captured in these basins and must infiltrate into the ground. What I'd like to also point out is that while, as part of the analysis, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection allows you to take credit for the infiltration associated with these underground basins as part of your quantity runoff analysis, what I described first, where we meet the two 10- and 100-year storm, and we're substantially below those thresholds, as I described already. As part of that analysis for quantity, you could take credit for this infiltration. We have not. In this analysis, those reductions that we meet for the two 10- and 100-year storm, well below the 50%, 75%, and 80% reduction requirements, doesn't include the benefit of these underground basins, nor does any review where you take the area under a hydrograph, that is the stormwater management analysis that establishes the peak flow from a site or from a basin. The volume under that hydrograph could be and is in the reports. And simply draw a direct correlation between the existing hydrograph volume and the proposed hydrograph volume as part that's in the report as part of the quantity analysis. You would be misguided in saying that the difference between them is what runs off the site as additional volume because that analysis doesn't consider this other analysis in Appendix K of the report with regards to recharge and the promoting of actual volume has nothing to do with peak, this recharge requirement. It's all about recharge of stormwater. One of the other outside agencies that I haven't yet mentioned this evening is the Delaware Raritan Canal Commission. And we made an application to the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission. We've received review reports from them. And most recently... And hold on a minute. We received a report from this Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission staff dated October 24th, 2022. This is DRCC, Delaware Raritan Canal Commission, file number 22-2840B. It's six pages long, and I'm going to highlight some of the aspects of what the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission looks at. It's primarily stormwater management and stream quarter protection. And they have specific regulations that reference not only the state standards, but their own standards in some aspects are greater than the state standards. And the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission staff is supported by NJDEP or New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection staff. We often, I'll say, kind of kiddingly say that it must be nice for them, some of those staff members that are able to drive from Trenton up Route 29 all along the Delaware River to the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission's office in Stockton, which is a beautiful facility. It's an old historic building. So for stream quarter, the commission staff finds, and I'm reading, that the 100-year floodplain for the Roysbrook is located at least 700 feet from the property line. Therefore, the project is not subject to the stream quarter review provisions of NJAC That's the specific Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission requirements. And that's with regards to stream quarter. So they've already identified for this project that even their regulations don't identify a regulated stream quarter on the site. And I've already identified the NJDEP riparian zone similar to a stream quarter for the small state open water in the east portion of the site. Northeast portion of the site has a 50-foot riparian buffer per the DEP, and the township is at 150 feet. I've discussed that earlier. Next, in this same Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission review report regarding stormwater The Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission found that the project as designed complies with the runoff quantity standards found in their regulations identified as NJAC 7,45-8.6A1. Water quantity... I'm sorry, water quality. And I'm reading right from the report. Therefore, the stormwater quality measures have been designed in accordance with the requirements of NJAC 7,45-8.7. That's quality. And finally, under the heading of groundwater recharge, the last sentence in the report dated October 24th, 2022, from the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission, under the heading of groundwater recharge, they come to the conclusion, and I'll read it, therefore, the project meets the groundwater recharge requirements of NJAC 7,45-8.5 for the proposed project. So you can see that those three specific key elements of stormwater management have been reviewed by the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission staff and found that they are in compliance with their regulations, which reference the state standards and in some cases are more stringent. So the stormwater management aspects of this project have been reviewed specifically by one of the review agencies, outside review agencies, and this is beyond the board's engineers' review. And their conclusion is that the proposed facilities comply with the standards. Okay. Perhaps we can go to a couple of the review memorandums that were received from the township And before I conclude, outside agencies, one last one to reference would be the NJDEP, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. As I stated early, I identified wetlands on the site, and I identified two areas of regulated activity, that is, area that would require a state permit for the driveway crossing of a small portion of wetlands I'm highlighting now along the westerly driveway accessed into the site. And then also a small quantity of wetlands for the crossing to continue that driveway in order to service access to the township lands. Beyond that, there are some freshwater wetland buffers, which would be reduced in some areas and increased in other areas via a mechanism known as a freshwater wetland transition area waiver averaging plan, and that would require state approval. And that application would be submitted by the applicant's environmental consultant. So that's the substance of the outside agency approvals that I've identified. Now, with regards to township staff reports, we are in receipt of a report dated October 24th, 2022 from Christopher Weniger, the chief fire marshal of the township. He issued a two-page report with an attachment with not enumerated items, but several bullet point items. One item I've already highlighted for the board and the public this evening, which was a request to provide for access on all... was a request to provide for access on all four sides of the building and that one portion of the building or the south westerly corner of the building that does not have emergency access to it, we would comply with that recommendation by the Mr. Winiger. And with regards to the other bullet point items within the October 24th, 2022 memorandum from Mr. Winiger to the board, we would comply with each and every one of those items to Next, there is a report we are in receipt of dated October 24th, 2022 from Panoni, the boards engineer. Not go through each and every item specifically. There are many items that are straightforward and would be complied with with changes to the board engineer satisfaction and review. And there are some items that suggest that testimony be provided and I'll try to address them now. First, with regards to the onsite handling of refuge. This would be handled via a trash enclosure. We're placed in the loading area at the southeast corner of the site, very close to where the rail line is, south of the border of the site. And that would be a trash enclosure fenced in with a gate that would house dumpsters where trash could be stored and then picked up by a private waste hauler and then also could contain recycling containers, also again handled by private waste haulers. It wouldn't be a facility that the county would service for recycling. With regards to the recently enacted requirement by the governor relating to EV charging stations, that's electric vehicle charging stations. Now with any land development project, there's a statewide requirement that specific areas be provided with or a specific number of parking spaces be provided with an opportunity for electric vehicle charging stations. We've identified six locations on the site and we have a typographic area in the listing of the parking requirements for the site where we say there's only five, but we're providing the six. The requirement by the state for electric vehicle charging stations shall be met or exceeded by the project proposal. And that also includes a recent statewide requirement that any industrial building such as this be constructed in such a fashion that it could support structurally solar panels on the roof. So this this project would comply with that requirement as well. With regards to, and I'm on, let me give the October 24th, 2022 review memorandum, I'm on page three, item six, request testimony regarding operation of the facility that would be handled by another witness. I've identified that the economic hardship waiver is subject to review and approval by the board. Item nine references the handling and collection of refuge and recycled material, which I just described. Item 10 on page three identifies the requirement that the building be structurally built to support future or initial installation of solar panels. Item 11 speaks to site lighting and I testified already that the project would meet and comply with the township standards. And if there's any deviation, it would be lower light levels such that we can even further reduce our glow or view of onsite lights. And then again, also, as with recent projects now, the site lighting is done with not with not with high pressure sodium or metal haloid lights is historically might have been done, but it's done and we proposed in this case to use LED lighting, which is more energy efficient and then also can be managed in such a manner that even the specific light output of a pole can be adjusted to address site conditions. We propose retaining walls around the stormwater management basin as well as along the easterly driveway. And as the board engineers comment under item 12 states that certainly as part of the construction permit for those walls, which in some places exceed four feet, they would require structural calculations and details and we would provide them as part of the construction permit application for that wall at that appropriate time. With regards to stormwater management, which is the heading at the bottom of page three, I've described the stormwater management facilities already, which include the pond constructed wetlands as a storage facility to retain stormwater runoff from the site and release it through a outlet structure at a controlled manner, which connects to the existing pipe at the front of the site. And then in addition to that, the water quality measures at the catch basins along the curb lines throughout the site for water quality measures, and that would be an additional structure upgrading of the stormwater catch basin. And then finally, with regards to groundwater recharge, I've identified those underground basins within the parking areas and loading areas that would capture runoff from the roof, that is roof runoff that that doesn't require pretreatment because it's not a paved surface and then promote that cleaner runoff into recharge into the ground. They are the basic overall elements. Under item one, there's a reference to an earlier Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission review memorandum and as I've stated, as time has moved quickly with regards to these outside review agencies, we've actually had other review memorandums and that most recent October 24th memorandum that I just referred to identifies that those three key aspects of the stormwater management design facilities for this project meet the standard. The remaining items, that is up to item 11 under stormwater management, refer to some detailed corrections to be made to the plan. And I would say for the record that all those items, that is items one through 11 under stormwater management within the board engineers review report to the board regarding stormwater management, all 11 items would be addressed to his satisfaction, their satisfaction. I'm going to skip traffic comments at the bottom of page four because we have another professional and a witness that'll address stormwater management. And then lastly, on page five, under miscellaneous, there's seven items. All seven of those items would be addressed to your engineer's satisfaction. And there is a request for, under item six, testimony regarding the status of the subdivision approval and I would defer to the earlier introduction by Mr. O'Grady regarding that prior subdivision approval. I'm going to take a breath.
Mr. Hay, you okay with all that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think the only issue that I wanted to make sure the engineer elaborates on is that testimony for both the parking and the loading space variances will be sought with another witness.
The size and
Size, correct.
Yeah, the waiver for the parking, we have a planner that'll testify and I can speak to, I'll say, the reduction in the parking area size right now, that is the nine by 18 spaces and the 24 foot access aisles versus the 10 by 20 spaces and the 30 foot access aisles in the township's requirement. We're seeking that waiver for this project, design waiver. It's been our practice and experience on numerous other projects and even other standards that the nine by 18 spaces and the 24 with access aisle are adequate for circulation within the parking area and certainly that can be supplemented by testimony by our traffic engineer as well as our planner. And I would also state for the record that that size of parking is not substandard in the sense that it's consistent with the residential site improvement standards, which is for parking areas.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I believe that is all the items on the first memorandum. Of course, obviously, the exception of what was elaborated with the traffic. I do believe we also had a second report. I'm not sure if the applicant's going to address that, but there was a supplemental report with respect to environmental measures as well that we prepared three days after this letter was issued.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Mr. Ford, can you just clarify, is it nine by 18 or 10 or 10 by 18? Because your your notice and some of the documentation is saying that proposing 10 by 18 and some of my calculations using the scale, it was showing 10 feet, but you had indicated nine. Can you just clarify?
I may be mistaken that we provided 10 foot wide spaces. If the scale is 10 foot wide spaces, that would meet the standard. So there would be no waiver required. So that's in excess of what the typical industry standard parking space is of nine by 18.
I don't have an issue with the nine foot by 18. I would like to hear what the traffic engineer has to say as well as the planner. You know, but I do want would like to remind the board, yes, the engineer is correct that those are admittedly accepted standards, even other standards such as RSI as in state.
Okay, there's a October 27th, 2022 review memorandum, also authored by Panoni Associates. Page one references the introduction and planning and zoning requirements and then page two, at the top of page two, starts with the environmental impact report authored by Eco Sciences. I will say that I can't speak to any comments about discrepancies or changes that need to be made to clarify and make the environmental impact statement consistent with the project plans and I'm sure we'll have other revisions, but specifically with regards to soil erosion and sediment control measures, I've identified that aspect of the project already and that actually we've secured approval for the soil erosion and sediment control plan. With regards to geology or groundwater impacts, we've identified that the stormwater management features of the project include a groundwater recharge element that'll promote groundwater recharge and meet the standard required by the regulations referring to same. With regards to the total impact of the site, we have, uh oh. I have 24 minutes. Okay. With regards to tree mitigation and tree impacts, we are impacting less than the 60% threshold for tree mitigation. I know that in the environmental commission review memorandum, there was questions regarding that. We'll provide additional documentation to clarify and identify that we're in compliance with that maximum 60% threshold. We aren't seeking relief. We're the area of disturbance beyond the 11.2 acres of disturbance associated with the project on the overall 18.2 acres. This dark green area, and I'm highlighting around the perimeter rear of the site as well as the front left corner of the site as you face the site, that dark area is all existing vegetation that would remain undisturbed. So that's not something that is disturbed and turned into lawn to the extent there's vegetation there, trees, they would be preserved and not disturbed. And as I indicated earlier, that's with the 18.2 acres and 11.2 acres of disturbance, seven acres of undisturbed area. Maybe there's specific items within the report regarding engineering. Under item 14 on page three refers to the New Jersey Stormwater Management Regulations, specifically identified under NJAC 7, semicolon, 8. We've provided testimony and detailed descriptions of the, or I have, of the stormwater calculations and stormwater management associated with the project. Going to plug in. When I started, it said it was five hours. It hasn't been that long, right? It only feels like that, right? With regards to the site zoning, as was described at the introduction, we're in the light industrial zone. This is permitted use. The one relief regarding bulk standards is for the building height and I won't get into any of the specifics of that. That'll be left for the architect and planner. But with regards to the other use elements of the project, the intention is that it'll comply in entirety, that is with the permitted uses. With regards to screening and buffering, we're providing for the required buffering along the frontage. It's a 20 foot minimum required landscape buffer. We're providing that and I'd like to highlight again that the zoning standards would permit the building to be 50 feet from the right away along the road, whereas in this application, we're proposing the building three times that, which the distance also offers a benefit with regards to a visual impact. And then with regards to those other existing vegetated areas that'll be maintained and left undisturbed, which are well in excess of the 20 foot minimum along the frontage, which I'm highlighting now along the northeast corner of the site. And then there's also a portion along the westerly boundary that also is not disturbed. The other element is part of the design that I think is a benefit is that by having the driveway access is curved in a fashion rather than a straight direct shot into the site without any interruption with curves or turns. Those changes in direction of the driveway offer for opportunities to eliminate that situation where you have a straight shot right down a driveway all the way into the site. So it's an aesthetic benefit as part of the design.
Mr. Bernstein, I got a question. So if Mr. Ford can't answer or address any of the issues that Eco Science needs to address in the engineering report. the issues that Eco Science needs to address in the engineering report, they're not here to testify. I don't know if Mr. Obradnik plans to bring them. I mean, how does that work? How are we supposed to work that out?
The burden for proofs rests with the applicant. If the board does not have the necessary evidence before regarding environmental issues, it may impact the board's ultimate decision on the on the application. But that's up to Mr. Obradnik and his client.
I mean, that's what Mr. Ford just said. Eco Science is going to address the issues. How are you going to, how are you going to address the issues in writing? Or is he going to come back and testify? Shouldn't it be part of the testimony? I mean, I'd like to
What is the board desire? I mean, historically, environmental testimony was limited to the Environmental Commission and in writing. If you want to hear from our environmental professionals, we'll, we'll provide live testimony, you know, in a subsequent hearing.
Yeah, I would recommend that. And I think an application of this size, the magnitude we're talking about, gives the public a chance to also question that professional. That's what I would recommend. Otherwise, I don't think we would give it a fair shake in terms of like hearing that type of testimony and being able to ask the subject matter expert on, on that particular thing. That's, that's just concerning the engineering report. I mean, I have other stuff in the Environmental Commission I'll go over as well, but that would be my recommendation.
I'm sure that won't be a problem, Mr. Gillian.
You want to go through the Environmental Commission review memorandum?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we could go through it and we can create a dialogue back and forth, however you want to do it.
Yeah, okay. Well, I, it's, one, I'll say, you know, request with its, rather than bullets, maybe if the items even could be numbered in the future, then we could actually go to a specific number. But I think on page one, I've already spoken to the landscaping, the total suspended solids, which is removal, which is part of the stormwater quality measures that are implemented as part of the application, stormwater management features, outside agencies. There's reference in the Environmental Commission review memorandum regarding the October 24, 2022 report by the Delaware Raritan Canal Commission, which I've already highlighted specific items within that report by the Delaware Raritan Canal Commission where they draw conclusions that, based on their review of the detailed stormwater management analysis, that it complies with the standards.
Yeah, I mean.
Excuse me, Mr. Ford.
I'm sorry.
Can you just reference back, there were three memorandums from the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission. At the bottom of each, of each one, it says, we do not recommend.
Right.
What does that mean?
Sure. I can, I can speak to that right now. Absolutely. As a matter of practice, the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission, at the end of every review memorandum, we have a board. At the end of every report lists either items that they require or questions that they have. And every report is never going to issue approval until you're able to provide the Delaware and Raritan Commission with a copy of the county approval letter and the township resolution of approval. They, they see themselves, the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission, as the final arbiter of review. So that's why I went to the specific detailed review aspects of that report. But thank you for highlighting that. It's not, once, you know, a approval resolution from the township is provided, the Delaware Raritan Commission and the copy of the township or the county review approval. And they're, in this case, they're also going to want or require what's known as a conservation and maintenance agreement, which is basically a filed document. That is a legal document that's filed at the county clerk's office, such that any property owner that would occupy this site or own it in the future would receive notice as part of a title report that there's certain aspects of stormwater management that require maintenance. So that aspect of recently enacted requirements as part of any stormwater management facility have helped to address some of the historic issues with stormwater management where it's designed in accordance with the standards, it's built in accordance with the standards, but it might not be maintained in accordance with the standards. So, and thank you for bringing that to my attention, too.
It just seems like a little bit of a catch 22 because usually, our approval is based upon approval of all outside agencies. And this outside agency is basing their approval upon our approval.
Correct.
So that's
Right.
A little confusing.
It's, it's, I'll say, an administrative function at that point, really, because the staff has already identified all the aspects of the application that are in accordance with the regulations. Yeah. And then just to continue on the stormwater management maintenance, part of our development of plans and reports that were submitted as part of the application included not only the drainage analysis and drainage report, but a stormwater management maintenance manual. That maintenance manual is also reviewed by the board's engineer and other agencies and ultimately is recorded as a final filed document with the county clerk's office, again, helping to enforce that aspect of stormwater management that once constructed perpetual maintenance is, is done. And the township has a ordinance requiring that there be annual inspections of these private stormwater management facilities. This would be private. It's not a municipal responsibility. It's not Public Works that maintains this onsite basin. It would be the owner. And the owner is required by ordinance to have the basin and the stormwater management facilities inspected annually. And that report of inspection is provided to the township engineering department.
Can I, can I add my comments for the stormwater, as long as we're on stormwater?
Yes.
So, couple of items with the stormwater. One was, and I'm reading on page, I don't think it's numbered here, but it looks like the second page, the green infrastructure for the water quality and quantity, the use of the underground infiltration system for groundwater recharge may not be considered green infrastructure. And I think this was brought up by Dr. Abrabka. So the township should confirm that this is a suitable green infrastructure for the practice. I mean, I saw the DRCC memo, and I think they're, I think they reviewed that, but that was something that was brought up by Dr. Abrabka. So let me just mention the other thing, and then we can go back and address that. I mean, with the, the stormwater management plan, it, it does satisfy these peak flow reductions. But nevertheless, I mean, we're, we're increasing the volume of runoff for this hundred-year storm still by 512,000 gallons of stormwater. That's, that's going to be discharged from a site. So, you know, approximately 90% of this volume is discharged by 26 hours, which is, which is two and a half hours after the, after a hundred-year storm. So it's certainly going to cause additional downstream flooding. I know we talked about it at the Environmental Commission, you know, the benefit of somehow holding on to that water. You know, it's, it's a type of thing, we're still creating a lot of water.
Yeah, yeah. I think, like, like to emphasize again that picking of the quantities or volume of stormwater from the stormwater quantity analysis section of the report and identifying the difference in volume under those hydrographs neglects to acknowledge or recognize the recharges associated with the underground recharge basins. But with regards to the suggestion of delaying the peak rate of runoff, we'll consider that. And we'll work with the board's engineer to make modifications to that quantity aspect, which is the basin in the front of the building, such that we work toward that target that's recommended in the, in the Vimal Commission review memorandum. And, and again, I think for, for the boards and public's knowledge should be, there's not a state standard that says, because another engineer could argue delay in your peak would have an adverse impact downside because there, you know, there could be timing that is different downstream. But, but regardless of that, we understand the, the suggestion and we'll work toward that.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, the environment we're in these days in terms of everybody releasing these stormwater detentions right after these floods, it's, it's just something that, that needs to be considered, talked about.
Well, in this case, too. In this case, absolutely. In this, and if, I don't think I've ever come here and said, you know, I'm, I'm at 79.99% reduction. I met the 80. I'm done. You know, we've always worked toward, you know, not just meeting the standard. And what I think I'd also like to point out in this case is that we're connecting to an existing stormwater pipe, which does run under Western Road. And, and as was discussed at the Environmental Commission, connects to the basin and the community across the street. That, that pipe has a restriction. That, that, that has a restriction that is another control point that would not, we're not looking to change. If we had such great flow from our site and such great increase in peak flow, your board engineer would be asking us to fix that pipe, making it bigger, making it, making it larger, doubling the size. That's not a request we received, and that's not a goal we're working toward. That, that control point, if you will, maybe layman's terms, you know, there's, you have a straw, you can only put so much water through that straw. We're not asking to replace the straw with a bigger straw that goes under Western Road.
You know, I hear you, but, you know, in this day and age, we start talking about, you know, regional, looking at things from a more regional basis. You know, I understand from your perspective, what you're trying to do. But again, you know, we've had applications here. And again, this is kind of like the new dialogue where, yeah, one thing just does affect the other. So it, it needs to, needs to be part of the dialogue and, and part of the review. And I understand you're complying with the regs, but again, this is, this is something that we're kind of bringing up for all these different applications.
Yeah. And, and having lived through multiple regulation changes and policy changes from not private engineers, but regulatory authorities that have jurisdiction over these entities like the State Department of Environmental Protection or the, the County Engineering Department, I can say that I've seen the different approaches that those regulatory agencies have tried to take for stormwater management. For example, with regional basins right on the stream itself, there was argument and thought that not all these little detention basins were a good idea, and we should do more regional basins, like at Hillsborough High School right off of Homestead Road, there's a pretty massive onsite, on-stream berm or dam, if you will, that impounds the water right on the, the stream. And then within Van Middleworth Park just upstream of that, there's another regional basin that not too far from this municipal building is Woodfield Estates, Marshall Drive, Beekman Lane, a cluster community that has no detention basins within the community because part of stormwater management in the late 80s, early 90s, when that was designed and built, was a more regional approach with these online streams. And then it's my understanding, you know, embankments or dams. And it's my understanding that the, the policyholders took a different direction when there was also, you know, thoughts that that might not be the best approach. So I, I understand, and we're, we're definitely complying with all the regulations, and we're not saying no to anything that's requesting us to go above and beyond and higher.
Right. I just want it to be part of the discussion and part of the review.
Absolutely.
So I'm sure the public is going to, going to bring it up as well. I think. Okay, can we go back to the, the green infrastructure?
Yeah.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hay wants to, keeps looking my way, so.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, yeah, I just want to remind the board that, you know, the applicant has shown, even by the DRCC, you know, letters as well as more estimation, they have showed compliance. There is always a concern about volume and what have you and what volume you will do. And if the applicant says that they can do that and they can achieve that measure by probably modifying the wet pond, which is essentially what this is, you know, I, I don't see any reason why we can't work with them to see what we can do to address that. And if they were to put together a point-by-point response on that and show what that reduction would be, I think they could satisfy the request. So I really don't have any concern about it. We've looked at it thoroughly. Obviously, we'd like to look at the soil logs with respect to separation of seasonal groundwater as well as any perched groundwater conditions. I think we've put that through our, both of our reports prevalently. And as long as Mr. Ford feels that, you know, he can meet that, then I don't see any reason why he couldn't modify the basin and perhaps go ahead and follow the EC's recommendation. But I just want to remind the board, yeah, I mean, the applicant's obligation, this being a major development application, which this is, and it's under our purview to review, I, I don't see any concern. So doing what he's saying he can do, this satisfies the EC's requirements, you know, I, I take no exception, exception to that. I would recommend the board that we put that in as a condition, you know, outside of, you know, for any type of approval, if this application would be approved. But we can go ahead and look at that and try to make that, achieve that and put that in a modified report. I think that that shouldn't be a problem. Okay. Thank you.
Could we go back to the Yeah, just to verify what Dr. Abrabka had brought up.
Okay. It is GI. Actually, the, I pulled out the BMP manual the next day and emailed it to Dr. Abrabka, and I'll provide a copy of it to the, to the Township Planning Department from the NJDEP website that identifies the underground small-scale infiltration basins as qualifying for GI.
Okay.
Green infrastructure.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask the applicant question with respect to that so we can make sure we put that in the record. Mr. Ford, just want to make sure that there's an understanding. Under what tables in the BMP manual, you might just recite, it meets the GI requirements?
I don't know the exact section of, it's nine, six or seven is the underground infiltration or the small-scale subsurface infiltration basins. And I'll provide a copy of it.
Mr. Chairman, I think it would be behoove that when they revise the stormwater report, that those BMPs are pointed out in the introductions and the conclusions that the answers the EC's concerns. Because in our measures, yeah, everything that we looked at, everything is a green infrastructure measure. It is found in all the tables. I do concur with the applicant's testimony. But he should, as a matter of record, put that in the revised stormwater report so that there's no misjudgment and that, you know, he's not, he's doing something less than what's required in the tables. Thank you.
Mike, do you want to go down on page two, the following concerns and issues? You want to go down them point by point? I know, I'm not asking if you want to, but we don't want to, but.
No, no.
But I'd like to, I'd like to go over them point by point. The applicant needs to provide calculations for the cut and the fill. Page two. It's like the commission noted the following concerns and issues. It's like the commission noted the following concerns and issues. I mean, on page one, I mean, just for the record, in terms of the phase one, you know, the ground, there was groundwater contamination that was found at the edge of the site, the levels of lead and arsenic and manganese were found, that was part of the, that was part of the phase one. But I'm talking about the following concerns and issues, about a quarter to the pa, quarter of the page down where it starts, commission noted the following concerns and issues. The applicant needs to provide the calculations for the cut and the fill.
And we'll do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, if you can, we could go down then. The applicant needs to address the need for 97 additional parking spaces than required by the township. The commission noted that the area, these additional parking areas could be used for stormwater management with rain gardens. I think that was something that Dr. Abrupta brought up as well.
I'm sorry, could you read that again?
Sure. The applicant needs to address the need for the 97 additional parking spaces, parking spaces then required by the, by the township. The commission noted that the area of these additional parking areas could be used for stormwater management with rain gardens.
Right, yeah, the number of parking spaces will be addressed by our facilities. You know, we're, we'll have testimony regarding the ownership and operation of the property and then also our planner and, and traffic engineer. Typically, we're, we're not requested to, or there's often cases where we're providing less than what the required standard is. Here, we're exceeding that, but we're not exceeding it at the detriment of additional impervious above and beyond the 60% allowed by the ordinance. We're at less than 50% impervious coverage, but specifically with regards to the operation. And often on other cop, applications, there's an opportunity, you know, obviously not to build a parking space if you're not going to need it or use it. So, but then alternatively, design facilities that are above and beyond what would require to mitigate for the stormwater for that parking space if it were built. So often, on other applications, there's been a choice to what is often referred to as banking the parking spaces or leaving them green. In other words, in this case, 139 parking spaces, if the applicant feels that he really could use those 139 parking spaces for his operation, and certainly the board doesn't want to get in a situation where the facility is underparked and can't support the use of the facility. We design the entire project, including the stormwater management facility, to accommodate that impervious coverage, but it initially is not built. It's, it's banked, if you will, it stays green. And if there's a need in the future that's identified, then it could be built. So that could be one option that could be considered.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to mention, yeah, that was one of the concerns I had, that if there isn't further justifications from facilities, planning and traffic relevant to parking, additional parking, that yes, bank parking do be considered. That is very common, especially in Somerset County and many municipalities, to bank parking. And then, of course, provide green space within those, but for a function that could be used to simply, you know, meet any of the conditions for stormwater management treatment, doesn't necessarily have to be, for instance, turned into rain garden. It could be used for something else, to supplement something else. And that's something that, if the board decided to do that, then I would ask the applicant's engineer to amend the stormwater report to show that and then show the functionality of what that would be and what type of benefit would be for the site.
So the, the next item too, I want to talk about, and I also saw this in Panoni, Mr. Hayes', excuse me, Mr. Hayes' report, is, is air emissions. They talk about a lot of, a lot of vehicle traffic here and the impact of the air quality from the emissions of the diesel trucks entering and leaving the site. It was a concern of the commission, and like I said, I saw it in the Panoni report as well, that the applicant should conduct an air quality analysis to assess the impact of the emissions from the diesel trucks in the surrounding area. Should be noted, the 55 and older development across, directly across on a site may include those respiratory issues, which could, which could directly affect the, which could be affected by the increase in emissions. And like I said, I think I saw something, Mr. Hayes, in your report too, about air emissions as well.
Yes, we did. We, we looked at it and it wasn't addressed in the EIS. And when you introduce, you know, a development this size, that can be easily correlated to the amount of vehicles that are presented in the traffic report. I have seen air experts come out, air quality experts come to go ahead and talk about what type of emissions there'll be during peak periods of operations. If that's something that the board chooses to ask for, they, they can, they certainly have the right to do that. Unfortunately, I saw nothing in the report to see that and maybe even a simple report might be necessary, but if testimony is something the board wants, they could certainly ask for that, that's common. But yes, there is no information that we have in terms of what, how the air quality will change in, in this project.
And when, with those experts, I mean, they typically also do airflow analysis?
Well, yeah, air flow, they'll look at the patterns on the site. I mean, the site is being graded thoroughly to accommodate a warehouse, so it's going to be a very flat site. And yes, they will look at whether or not the, where will the air patterns simply migrate to? And I've seen that before and they'll talk about what the particular rate is and whether or not it will cause concern for adjacent development. And they have to make the proofs, it's the same as doing anything with respect to noise, showing, you know, where is the nearest property would be affected and what would be the, I want to say impacts of that, of those effects, what would happen? But if they find it's negligible, they find it's negligible, sometimes they do that. Keep in mind that this development is fairly set back from, from the road and it's fairly set back from many of the residents. There's a very large buffer. So, but those things do have to be taken into account when they do do those studies. If it was all lawn, there'd probably be a lot more effects, but you do a fairly large buffer. But yes, they can model that and they can testify and provide a report.
Yeah, I mean, I would recommend that.
Yeah, we're gonna look, we're interviewing potential experts in that field. It's, it's a little different than like light and noise because the ordinance doesn't have any standards. So like, to what end are we trying to demonstrate? You know, when we look at foot candles, it's a calculation. When we look at a decimeter, we can look at noise. But we do feel that we will be able to provide some expert testimony with respect to air quality.
I was listening and also it's, to answer your question, it's 9.8, small-scale infiltration basins. This is the, I'll say this is A2. We'll provide a copy of this to the township. This is right from the State Department of Environmental Protection website, under the BMP manual subsection 9.8. And I'm highlighting right now with the cursor and making it larger so that everybody can see that the small-scale infiltration basins under, in this, in this state manual identify the stormwater management rules and the applicable design and performance standards that these, this mechanism addresses. And the first one is green infrastructure, yes.
And I think it's, it's also to note that, you know, with, with small-scale GI, they wanted that to source. And of course, that testimony was provided earlier and that's why we accepted that testimony. So it's a little bit different with the regs these days in terms of, you know, what it used to be, I was treating that source. And as long as that's been provided, we've seen that, we have no technical issue. Could that be employed if you do bank parking? The answer is yes, that could potentially be employed. And then, of course, the stormwater report would have to be amended.
Mr. Julian?
So there's a no idle regulation that the tenants in the building would need to comply with. DEP has a three-minute idle limit pursuant to NJAC 7.27-14.
Yes.
The, the phase one, the, the preliminary report that was dated up April 29th, it identified the four files, but they were not provided. I'm not sure, Mr. Hayes, if I saw that also in your analysis, but the, we wanted to provide the draft preliminary assessment from peak, we wanted to provide the 2021 site investigation report, the 2005 remedial investigation summary letter report, and the 2007 remedial investigate, investigation work plan. And we were asking for, for some discussion relative to the two NJDP site remediation cases. I think it's something that should be, should be discussed as well. And if you want, you know, your environmental person to discuss that, when, when he comes here, I think that would be beneficial to everybody. Another issue was we, we needed to provide information on the tenants, which you spoke about, and the hours of operation, which I'm not sure if you're able to speak about, but that was, that was one of the concerns from the Environmental Commission as well. Another was the, the traffic impact analysis from Dolan and Dean, that was dated July 22nd, 2022, notes a trip generation for the trucks of three in the morning peak hours and four in the evening peak hours, but it didn't make sense, didn't seem accurate considering that there's 20 loading docks in a proposed building. So the applicant, we were asking to address this discrepancy.
Right, that would be addressed by the traffic engineer.
Understood.
Yep. And I think the next bullet point with regards to the vernal pole referenced in the LOI was discussed at the Environmental Commission. Mr. Offenard was there to address that and he could perhaps provide in writing what he stated at the Environmental Commission.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
You're seeking two general permit number 10s. I'm assuming at the two areas, you're going to be crossing the wetlands. So further, I want to say, department approval would probably also exonerate you of anything in terms of any further actual vernal habitat, correct?
Correct.
TNE, TNE being threatened endangered species. If they're going to be seeking general permits, those permits are going to show that if whether or not there's any habitats that are going to be disturbed and also the operation hours of when they would be able to build on the crossings.
And, and maybe Mr., how do you say his name, Arford? I'm sorry.
Offenard.
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 Offenard, maybe.
Offenard.
He could provide that. I'm not, I, it's Tom, right? Could I say Tom?
No, Tom is fine.
Okay.
It makes Ford so much easier, right?
It does.
Fee word.
There you go. Maybe he could provide that testimony when he's here too.
Yeah, yeah.
So we, we talked about the truck traffic, it's going to increase significantly with the proposed warehouses compared to the current conditions relative to the adjacent residential properties. So along with air, noise is also a concern. So the applicant should submit a noise analysis to provide, to prove that the increase of noise levels due to the truck traffic traveling on the roads will not increase above the residential noise standards.
I'm not a noise expert, for sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just opine on that. Typically, noise levels, and I'm quite sure Mr. O'Driscoll is going to say the same thing I'm going to say, noise levels have to be measured from, let's say, points of noise. For instance, if it's at the loading dock areas or if it's fixed apparatus such as generators and what have you, which hopefully the architect will elaborate on, you know, that's how it's measured. The noise expert can provide a report and provide testimony, but I just want to caution the board with respect to the fact that you're going to have traffic operations going through ingress, egress, and it's typically not done for vehicles. It's only done because of the fact you have the idling ordinance that kind of cancels it out. It's more or less with any type of generator facilities that are provided. I have not seen anything with respect to generators, but if there are, or any type of noise emitting facilities, I hope that the applicant would provide that testimony, what have you. That has to be provided, no matter what, that's, it's a state law. And the township has it, it's bound to the state ordinance, it has to be provided. So, but very difficult with vehicles on idling. I mean, you can do a measure, but it's very hard to quantify, I can tell you in my experience.
The applicant should consider removing the extra parking spaces to allow the impacts to the Hillsborough Township Stream Corridor to be zero. This would negate the need for the averaging. In addition, the Hillsborough Township ordinance prohibits driveways and parking areas, pervious or impervious, but the Hillsborough Township and such averaging or waivers are not available.
We're considering that modification to the layout.
The applicant did not present adequate alternatives to the project in the Eco Sciences dated July 27th. The EIS should be revised to include sufficient information on alternatives.
Yeah, I would say that that would be addressed by the author of the report.
Tom.
Yeah, Offenard.
Got it. Another issue with the EIS was need to clarify why the EIS includes a flood hazard area permit and verification approval date dated June 11th, 2020, which refers to an 11-lot subdivision on a 23.3 acre parcel. It doesn't seem relevant to the application, while the approval does reference block 185 lot 1. Lot 1 is the verification of the riparian zone on the block, excuse me, slash lot. If this is the case, why is a flood hazard, flood hazard application individual permit included?
Yeah, the, the, first, it's, I'm not sure that more information is ever a bad thing to include it. And specifically, it's not to identify that we're going to use that individual permit for the road because we've moved the road out of that regulated area. It's not being proposed there. But what that approval also identifies is the NJ, excuse me, New Jersey Department of Environmental Protections approval of the limit of the riparian zone. That is, the riparian zone is 50 feet wide. So that, that aspect of that approval is pertinent to this application because it identifies a regulated area on the site similar to the wetlands and wetland buffers. So I think that was prudent of them to include it. In fact, I have already cited as part of my testimony as a prior approval that is part of our aspect of planning.
And we talked about the general permits and the transfer, the fresh, the freshwater general permit and the transition area waiver plan. You said you're going to submit that, correct?
Correct.
We, we talked about the DRC, DRCC approval, but I don't think the EIS mentioned the need for DRC, DRCC approval, although you do have it, right?
Well, we, we have it not authorized an approval. We have our most recent report that identifies all the stormwater and stream corridor aspects of the project are technically in compliance with their regulations, but we don't get final action from the DNR Canal Commission, as we discussed earlier, until we have that township resolution of approval and the county approval.
Yeah, I don't think we saw that letter at the EC, but I see it now. Tree, tree mitigate, excuse me, tree mitigation calculations shown on the plans, on the plans and in the EIS use different numbers. 100% of the site appears to be currently forested, not only eight-plus acres as stated on the plans, and EIS has believed the clearing of the trees for the proposed development would exceed the 60% threshold. So that being said, the applicant would need to resubmit the consistent calculations to determine tree mitigation and how it meets or does not meet the local tree ordinance.
Yeah, the, the reference, first, we already testified that we'll comply with the 60% limitation, will identify with additional documentation how we've made that calculation. And I'm, you know, the, the comment says that there's a place on the plan that says there's only eight acres of woods and. And I would say that that's not accurate. I don't, they're actually, on the tree mitigation plan, it says that there's in excess of 15 acres of woodland on the site. And we'll provide a detail exhibit that illustrates how all those numbers were concluded.
And then another item we talked about was an oil-water separator in each stormwater inlet to control the oil runoff from the parking areas.
Yeah.
If that's required, but I know we talked about it.
And I would hope there's not, you know, with more modern equipment, there isn't any oil. And I've already outlined the water quality treatments that are being placed in advance of every catch basin. So before any runoff with oil in it would get to the catch basin, it would get to one of those water quality measures, that is, the mechanical treatment devices. We refer to them as MTDs. But if there's some additional element within the catch basin itself that specifically the Environmental Commission member that referenced this or recommended it, and we can fit it into the basin, some shield or shroud, we would consider that, yes.
And I guess, before I close my remarks, I mean, it definitely should be noted, I think we talked about it already, but there was, there was a lot of people at the Environmental Commission had numerous, numerous questions. I don't know if all of them, you know, were answered, but for the record, they're all included in the Environmental Commission's report. Everything from, you know, has the FAA been contacted relative to development of the site? You know, was FEMA made aware? I mean, those are things that the public brought up that I'm sure, you know, at whatever point they get to question yourself or Tom, I'm sure that'll be brought up, too. But they're, they're part of the record and the memo that we generated for the report, so. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else from the dais?
Yes, Port.
Anything else?
Okay, I just had one question, Mr. Hay. Maybe you can help enlighten me on this one. But understanding part of this stormwater management plan is to use the basin across the street. Who has control over that?
No, we're not using the basin across the street.
The basin is not being used across the street.
Okay, I thought I.
No, that's, I just described how our runoff and where it goes to.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Your runoff is going to there, so you use.
It's just like down.
I mean, that's, that's the crux of my plan. The runoff is heading in that direction, so.
Yeah, it's one, it's one point source. Yes, that's correct. It's one point source, but the point source is going to be controlled by an outlet control structure in the wet pond, I would assume. And is that, is that correct?
Correct.
And that, that outlet control structure will control the three designated design storms that the DEP promulgates. And that is what they have to meet because this is a major development. If we did an inspection or they did an inspection and found that the pipe, let's say, was failing or there was a material there that is not to today's standards and criteria, we could ask them to go ahead and replace that. That can be done in many different ways, but most likely would be done in situ. I don't believe that, you know, it is an issue, but consider that because it's one point source and the water is going to leave the outlet control structure, they have met the 50 to 75 and 85% criteria. That is what has to be met under the regulations. Now, the modification in terms of the volume that leaves the site, they have to find ways to modify the basin to control the volume and to provide, I want to say, a little bit more of a lag time. It's been considered 12 hours when I read the EC report. It might be possible to be able to do that. I'm not sure if they have enough room to do it, but I will say in my estimation that something can be done to, I want to say, release that volume a little bit less than just having a deluge over what's been cited in the EC report at 26 and a half hours. So, yeah, I don't want people to get the impression that the board and the public to get the impression that, you know, all of a sudden you're going to get this deluge of water. They cannot do that. The regulations are very clear, very much so by the book and by the regulations. You have to attenuate. You don't attenuate, you have a major issue. And to, I want to say, the applicant's testimony, which we have to recall, the recharge requirements, they're going above and beyond the recharge requirements. You have to meet or exceed. They've done that. They've done that by using the roof runoff, putting it in two separate areas, getting it back into the ground. Now, if we get the soil data and we feel that there may be an issue with that, we would then have to talk to the applicant's engineer about, you know, what we can do to modify that. But I'm quite sure the applicant, knowing the geology and knowing what is under the ground with groundwater, they should probably already know what provisions they need to make and what accommodations they need to make. So I'm comfortable with what they have so far. I think that, you know, they, going above and beyond with the volume is a good thing because no one wants to have a deluge of water because, as you know, if you don't, if you don't, I want to say, maintain your outlet control structure, you're going to have all kinds of issues coming out of the basin. The good news is it's a wet pond, which, you know, does provide a feature, and it's very, very well looked upon by the DEP, I can tell you that. They love those types of structures because they provide habitat. So the benefits there outweigh, you know, whatever the cons are and whatever issues you would find in a basin that size. So, but, yeah, from a volume standpoint, peak flow standpoint, Mr. Chairman, I don't have issues. If the pipe is failing, it is on the applicant to repair it because when they do their stormwater model, it is the outlet pipe. And yes, it would be under their purview to fix it if there are any issues with it. Maybe the applicant, in terms of going ahead and looking at the revisions they have to make on the stormwater report, they can look at that and then, you know, provide a simple report in the stormwater report to say the pipe is in good condition. But if it's not, yes, we would ask them to repair it because that is part of their model.
My question, though, is now if you've got, so say the base on the other side of the road is already at flood point, say at 100-year flood. So it's at that point. Now you're adding more water because you're tying into that basin. What would that do? Wouldn't that then exacerbate?
The methodology to address that is that, imagine this. If it doesn't rain every day, so there's not water going into that basin every day.
Right.
Similarly, when there's a rain event and you have a greater volume of water and a higher peak, if you provide an impoundment like this basin and release it at a controlled rate slower such that the peak at the basin across the street where this, our site water flows to is less than what flows there at the peak rate today over that time interval, that would address the impacts and eliminate the negative impacts, no stormwater impacts. What I'd like to also say is since the Environmental Commission meeting, we've had, you know, numerous discussions with the applicant about the public's concerns. Action we've taken, we've contacted the township to try to secure a copy of the drainage report for that project that was built, I believe, in around 2005. Actually, our office, it was a Ryan Holmes project, I believe, and our office actually provided a lot of the construction stakeout for the project. And.
Doesn't Mr. Savo's office have?
No, you, your office handled that project.
That was impossible, man.
I wish I could say the same.
So we're trying to secure the copy of that drainage report because presumably that drainage report, since it doesn't just address the runoff that came from that, that project, but also what flows through the project, would help us to perhaps do an even more enhanced study where we could model with their methodology for that basin, both sites together. That's one, that's one aspect that we're working toward if we can secure that drainage report. What I'd also like to report to the board, too, is that not only having been involved, not in the original engineering design of that project, but during the construction aspects of it for construction stakeout, and that was normally primarily our survey department, I actually was at the site earlier this year. I met with representatives of the homeowners association to discuss the issues they experienced during Ida. I walked, many of the faces I saw at the Environmental Commission were familiar with, to me. They might not have recognized me, but I spent a couple hours one afternoon walking with them and their homeowners association representative that manages the onsite improvements. And we looked at the homes and the areas where the basements were flooded. And what was reported to me and what we found was that it appears that a number of the areas, the pipes that drain the basements rather than being just relying on a pump, but actually have some gravity flow connection to the stormwater management collection system such that there's, in a large rain event where the stormwater collection systems are overtaxed and the water level rises within the pipes, and this is before it even gets to the detention basin, would back up. And it was during that site visit, my understanding that it was concluded that that's what happened, that the, during that horrific rain event of, you know, many inches within a short period of time caused those stormwater collection systems to back up and flood those basements. And the resolution that was discussed at the time was that those gravity flow pipe connections from the basement levels just have backflow preventers put in on them. So they allow flow in one direction, but not back up the pipe. Or perhaps, you know, while they might have been implemented for addressing groundwater conditions around a foundation or footing drain, the benefit is a detriment when they have a gravity connection to a stormwater pipe that's at the same level or not that far below that level such that when the stormwater collection system flow is exceeded and it backs up, you know, up the pipe, it would back up into the basement because there's not enough grade elevation difference that perhaps you even abandon those direct gravity flow connections and go back to the typical, what most homes have, which is a pit with a sump pump in it. Then you're not relying on gravity for de-watering the foundation and the footing around the foundation, but you're using a sump pump to pump up into it. That would help to eliminate that situation where water could back up into the pipe and then flood a basement. That was, at first, and after that meeting, there was no further interaction.
Okay. And I'm just looking, anyone else from the dais here? It's Coys.
I just have two questions about the wet pond. First off, being that it's a wet pond and we, whether, is there any kind of aeration or any other thing planned to keep the water from getting stagnant?
Yes.
So it'd be a fountain of some sort.
Right.
And that, and that would be maintained by the applicant?
Correct.
And I don't have the plan in front of me. How far above the level of the water does it have to get to before it dumps into that relief pipe?
Well, the permanent pool in the, in the pond is maintained by having the first outlet out of the pond, albeit a small outlet, at that water level. So as soon as the water starts rising above the permanent pool, it would allow water into the outlet control device and then from the outlet control device to the existing pipe in Weston Road. But the total.
Is there one above that?
Yes, yeah, there's multiple, within the outlet structure, there would be multiple different hydraulic mechanisms, if you will. Correct. And, and then the top of the basin is about five, six feet above that permanent pool elevation. That's where all that storage is.
And what's the anticipated volume that that pond can hold if it should max out?
I have it in the drainage report. I can look for that number and get it to you.
Next meeting.
Okay.
Mayor, I just want to remind everyone that under the new rules, a stormwater maintenance agreement for the, any pond, any stormwater structure has to be written in. And aeration is written into the stormwater maintenance agreement. And I'm quite sure that that'll be articulated if this application were to be approved and perfected, and that would obviously be deeded and recorded as well.
Okay. So seeing that we're almost at 10:30, I think we got a couple of housekeeping business just, but for the public, I think where we'll start off at the next meeting will be, you know, questions from the public.
Mr. Chairman. As the board is well aware, my office gets transcripts of all these hearings. Once we receive them from Mr. Lombardozi, we will provide them to the planning office and ask them to put it on Civic Clerk so that the public has access to this transcript well in advance of the next appearance. Another housekeeping issue, Mr. O'Grady mentioned in his initial presentation that the applicant has a prospective tenant. I think we need all the information related to same. Not only included what the information in Mr. Coys's report, but all other related items. And I would suggest to the board that the next witness after Mr. Ford is done taking his lap, so to speak, at the next meeting would be the applicant's representative rather than Mr. Dean to get an idea for the public and the board as to exactly how this proposal is going to operate. Thirdly, before people start to leave, the board is aware of this. Mr. O'Grady is clearly aware of this since he's spending most of his time here with us, that there is no schedule for board meetings yet established for calendar year 2023, except for the reorganization meeting, which I believe is January the 12th. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Coys. Yes. We would ask the applicant continue this matter till at least January the 12th. And for the public's edification, the applicant will not be heard on January 12th. There are other applications before this one. However, in order to set the dates, they'll have to be done probably at the beginning of the regular meeting of the board. So to the extent that people need, you know, if a representative of the association, et cetera, attends the meeting, we are not going to do a surprise meeting and have the applicant show up on the 12th with nobody here. But we cannot establish a return date for this application until next time the board reorganizes and a calendar is approved. So we're asking for an extension, at least on time of decision through the end of January, which obviously will then be.
That's not a problem, and we'll execute that and put that on the record tonight. I just wanted to mention one more thing. You know, if the members of the community wanted to meet with our professionals, we'd offer to do that. Maybe look at, you know, some, you know, offsite impacts that we can perhaps address. So I'll, whoever wants to be the designated representative, I'll give you my card. And if you want to meet with our professionals, we'll, we'll offer to do so at the public's convenience.
We need to be made aware of those conversations, Mr. O'Grady, after they occur. Only so that we don't get them. With that, Mr. Chairman, the housekeeping item is a motion to continue this application to January the 12th, 2023, at 7:30 PM for the purposes of establishing new hearing dates without further notice and extinction on the time of decision through at least January 31st, 2023, which I believe I see out of the corner of my eye, Mr. O'Grady signing. I'll make that motion.
Okay. There's second.
Second.
Okay, any final comments from the dais? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beeson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mary LeHoney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chris Rogers?
Yes. And just a reminder to the board, we do have our next meeting on December 1st.
And we do have an application.
And we do have an application.
However, for those of you looking for change of pace, it is not warehouse. It's affordable housing.
Okay. All right. So as always, if you're unable to make it, please notify the planning office.
Folks, please be quiet. We still have business to contend.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have, the mayor has made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, one in favor? Aye, we're adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Mr. Hay, I need you for a minute.